I just wanted to thank you all again for sticking around and for participating. We got a lot of comment cards and questions that we'll be reading out and hopefully we can have a great productive discussion on what can be done in Alameda County. So I'll introduce our moderator, Ms. Cynthia Periliot. I apologize for mispronouncing if I did, but feel free. Cynthia is the Executive Director of the Alameda County Care Alliance.
Thank you, Priya. How's everybody? Is it now afternoon?
Yeah.
Almost, to say the least. So I was said, I am Reverend Cynthia Carter Periliot. I am the Executive Director and co-founder of the Alameda County Care Alliance. I'm also a minister at the Allen Temple Baptist Church, and I am so very pleased to have been invited and participate as your moderator today. Before I get started, can we just give a round of applause to these incredible heroes and sheros? Absolutely. Absolutely. And you deserve every ounce of it. I don't know about you, but I don't know if I have the words to describe my feelings presently. Outrage, anger, totally discouraged, yes. Hopeless. And those are just beginning words and adjectives to describe, I think, what all of us sensed and felt as we watched this riveting documentary called The Guardian. When I think of the word guardian, I look the word up, and it's supposed to refer to being a protector, provider, someone that looks out. And oh, by the way, for those of us that are people of quote-unquote "faith," you've often heard the terms guardian, angels. Supervisor Miley, thank you for having the courage to present this incredible documentary to the leadership here in Alameda County. All of us, could we give Supervisor Miley? Absolutely. Much respect. Much respect. And so it's important that we have this opportunity to hear from our panel. Thank you all that responded via the commentary cards, and you can continue to do so. But let's go ahead and jump into this subject matter. We've got some amazing people here. They're on the front line, courageous, and we want to hear from them. So what we're going to do, folks, is have each of our panelists take about a minute and a half to give us a little background about your obvious courageousness. At least three of our panelists are in the documentary that are here. Before we actually have them speak to specifically their dedication and devotion to this important subject, I'd like to take a few minutes to review a short bio. I'm going to start off with the Honorable Benjamin Bartlett. Ben Bartlett is a member of the Berkeley City Council, whose core mission is to defend the powerless. Ben has passed more than 60 measures, including a first-in-the-nation plan to house the homeless in prefabricated modular micro-units and a first-in-the-nation law divesting from companies involved with Trump's border and banning local police cooperation with ICE. Ben is fifth-generation Berkeley native, environmental lawyer, and respected community leader. Ben's mission is to leverage industry and government to deliver innovation, expand opportunity, and protect the environment. Last but certainly not least in Ben's bio, he is the son of community activists, and at a very young age, he learned the value of community and the necessity of progress. Those values of innovation and inclusion continue to inform Ben's policies. I'd like to begin with the Honorable Ben, if you will. Would you just share a little bit about your background and your passion about this, and as well, comments as it relates to this incredible documentary that we all experienced?
Thank you, Cynthia. And also, thank Supervisor Miley for hosting us, and thank all of you for coming, and thank you heroes here for the work you're doing. Now, a couple of years ago, about three years ago, I started to hear about friends of my mother, who is here, by the way, thank you, Mom, for opening this up for me, started to hear about people that we knew in our family and our friends who were losing their properties in probate court. And they would tell these crazy stories about not having the ability to save the house, and they'd take it, and this and that, and it sounded so incredible, I couldn't believe it. But then it came really close to home, and someone very close to my heart fell victim to this, and when I went to go seek assistance, I couldn't find any. So that's actually why I ran for office. I ran for office to address the plight of senior citizens losing their wealth, because, you know, I believe that our elders have built this wonderful society that has blessed us, and they've got to be protected. So I ran for office on that measure, and the first thing I did was I created a public advocate to go into probate court to argue and defend these people's properties. It's funded by developer funds, and it's meant to be a model for the county supervisor. And then, going forward, you know, I have a constituent right now who had their house and needed repairs, so the court appointed a receiver, which is another form of guardian. These are all court-appointed trustees, one form or another, appointed a trustee, and he was supposed to spend $175,000 to repair this man's house, instead he racked up a bill for $700,000. Now, I was in court, and I asked the judge, can we see some accounting for this bill? The trustee said, well, I don't have the accounting, or, you know, whatever, whatever, whatever. And then the next move was, well, we'll see what happens, but prepare yourself to accept whatever he gives you. So at this point, you know, because I've written op-eds on this issue, I get calls from Florida, Arizona, Contra Costa County, San Diego, Maryland, New Jersey, New York. This is a plague in this country. These are small syndicates, little groups of people making a lot of money with no oversight and no right of accounting. It's really endemic, and we have to address it.
Thank you, Honorable Ben Bartlett. Next, we'll hear from Linda Kincaid and Richard Calhoun. They're the founders of the Coalition for Elder and Disability Rights, or CEDR. AB 937 in 2013 was the legislative response to unlawful isolation of Linda's mother. AB 937 amended California Probate Code 2351 to clarify that conservatives have the right to visitors, phone calls, and personal mail. Richard sponsored SB 1191 in 2018. SB 1191 amended California Penal Code 368.5 to clarify that abuse is a crime, and law enforcement has exclusive responsibility for criminal investigation. I'd like to introduce to you Linda Kincaid and Richard Calhoun.
I first walked the halls in Sacramento on July 19th of 2010, and I've been doing it ever since, and I will continue to do it. And the one thing I will share that will scare the heck out of you is, knowing what I've known for the last nine years, there is nothing you can do to protect yourself.
I do want folks to understand that Richard was a sponsor of SB 1191 last year. We expect improvements in law enforcement policies. At the moment, they're essentially, elder abuse policies are essentially non-existent. I got involved in this 2010. My mom was a victim. Her front door was broken in. She was kidnapped from her home. She was held prisoner. Every penny she had was stolen, and cops wouldn't help. And the DA at the time, this was in San Bernardino County this happened, the DA down there kept telling me, there's nothing out of the ordinary. Stop calling. There's nothing out of the ordinary. And guess what? He was right. There was nothing out of the ordinary. As I advocated for my mom, other people found me, started approaching me with their stories. And now I've heard stories not only all over California, but all over the country. After seven years of litigation, finally that's behind me, and now I'm focusing on investigative journalism, and there are more stories in California than I can begin to cover. So I focus on the ones where there are court records that lay things out really clearly, where I can just get public records that establish the story really nicely. You have one here in your county. Eleanor Frerix is now 95. She has been imprisoned, isolated, abused since 2012. Earlier today, Julie was asking me if she could go visit Eleanor. Eleanor's in a facility just a couple miles from here. I told Julie, no, you can't go visit her. Eleanor's not allowed visitors. Any of you might like to visit Eleanor? Good luck trying. You won't get in the door. She's not allowed visitors. And we've tried reporting this to Oakland Police Department over and over and over, to where I finally got a letter back from the Community Police Oversight Agency telling me that it is department policy not to accept reports of elder abuse. So this is your community. This is what's happening here, and it is up to you folks right here to let your elected people know that you want things to change.
Thank you very much, Richard and Linda. Before we move to our next panelists, I wanted to make an important point, and that is the individuals, that's councilperson Ben, that's Richard, and Linda are all California-based, Alameda County, as well as throughout California. The wonderful folks you'll meet in a minute have come far and near. You saw them in the documentary. Tom will talk about your work as well, but the three folks I'm about to introduce have come a long way, have sacrificed a lot to be here to share their own stories, as you saw in the documentary, but also point out the significance of all of us getting involved in this important social justice issue. I'd like to now introduce Rick Black. Rick and his wife were first exposed to fraudulent guardianships and probate exploitation in June of 2013. The family lost over $1 million. Motivated by this experience, Rick built a coalition of over 50 families who lost over $40 million from 2010 through 2015 due to fraudulent and fraudulent adult guardianships in the state of Nevada. Rick left his job as an executive of a global textile company in early 2015 to devote himself full-time volunteering for guardianship reforms and to assist other families. Rick has investigated over 500 suspected fraudulent guardianship cases nationally and counseled over 1,200 families. He coined the phrase, and I quote, "Isolate the victim, defame legitimate family, and liquidate the estate," unquote, for the purposes of describing the hallmarks of fraudulent guardianships and probate fraud. Rick's efforts have freed dozens from fraudulent guardianships nationwide. I present to you Rick Black.
It's great to be here, and I'll echo the comments to Nate and his leadership and what we learned several months ago when we came in to show the first screening of the movie in California. You know, unfortunately, the black community is targeted by these frauds, but this is not a black thing or a white thing. This is a green thing. It is all about greed. In California, it's estimated that 140,000 adults are under conservatorship in this state. That represents approximately $30 billion, with a B, dollars in estate value. And your aging community and the wealth that has developed in California over the last 100 years means that on every year, $150 billion changes hands generationally in this state. The act of conservatorship, the act of probate fraud, the act of trust fraud is the easiest way for the predatory attorney, legal community, to intercept those funds and redirect them to them and their peers and away from your designated errors. I share that with you as we embark on this discussion, but always keep in mind, this is all about money.
Thank you, Rick. Next on our panel, and is also seen in the documentary, Terry Williams is an American social scientist, analyst, and consultant specializing in legal research relating to elder, family, and social phenomena. As a former legal assistant and real estate agent, Ms. Williams discovered a criminal enterprise running straight through the courts of Las Vegas, operating under the guise of legitimate guardianship. Having called the matter to the attention of numerous law enforcement agencies and having become a highly sought-after journalistic source, Ms. Williams debuts her findings in both The New Yorker article entitled "The Takeover: How the Elderly Lose Their Rights" as well as The Guardian's documentary, a riveting feature, as we saw today, and it is the film that evidences the racketeering operation targeting wealthy seniors, disabled, and families whose chief purpose is to intercept generational legacy wealth under the guise of the legal system. I'd like to introduce Terry Williams.
Can you hear me? Hi. I want to thank Supervisor Nate Miley. Thank you so much. I want to thank everybody that came out today and looked at this video, and if I could possibly get you to go home, take this with you, and start conversations everywhere. If we don't stop this, this is us. We worked 20, 30, 40 years to retire in a fashion that we want, but these people will come and intercept it and won't give a second thought to what you wanted. You become their pawn. They get your money. You and your family, for generations, just suffer under it. Now, what's interesting is, I lost my father in 2003. He actually had a nursing home incident that actually took his life. That experience created an asset for an estate. I went out of town. My dad was not a resident or domicile of Nevada. When I went to his hometown to do the memorial, these people snuck into court and opened up a probate ex parte. I had no clue for months, and then I go to this hearing in a probate court, which is only for decedents, and I'm looking at a man beg a probate judge to see his living mother. And I'm sitting here like, what? And I couldn't believe the vicious opposition to this man's request, simply to see his mother. And so I immediately said to myself, something's not right. So then they called my case, which I had no clue what had happened or why I was there. My dad had a will. It had been probated on the East Coast, and everything was straight. I was his executor and all of this stuff. They called our case, and the same opposition to the man's request to see his mother stood up as the other side. They had basically initiated a fraudulent probate that was somehow tied to the living. The attorney that I had, I didn't know he had been hired for me. When we left the hearing, my head was kind of spinning, but he takes me outside, and he's like, look, whatever it is they want, give it to them. What they're about to do to you is not going to be worth it. And I looked at him, and I didn't want to let on that I knew something was wrong, but as soon as he left, I turned on my heels, I hit the records room, and I pulled every case with these people. And there was a distinct pattern. Everything was ex parte. Filings on Monday morning were in the 20s. Like, they would find out who just died over a weekend. It was insane. But there's a two-component racketeering operation. It happens in guardianship and probate. The cases that I was seeing in probate referenced a guardianship, so they won tag team between the guardianship court and the probate court to steal everything. So all I can say to you is, I have a website. You're welcome to look at it, read up on it. It's Citizen, singular, no S, the number four, justice.com, and there's actual excerpts of documents that will help you get a clue of what you're facing if we don't do something now. Thank you.
Our next panelist, who we saw at the very early part and throughout the documentary, Julie Belchi's parents were legally kidnapped from their home via a private guardianship in August of 2013, beginning a five-year journey through family court and the Regional Justice Center Court in Nevada. After countless hearings, the court restored their civil and constitutional rights so that they could go and live with Julie and her family where they reside today. I love this woman because she chose not to be a victim, but a survivor. Julie found her purpose at 48 years old, and now dedicates her entire life to supporting people who are experiencing different stages of elder abuse and isolation. She runs the helpline at Casam Cares Foundation, sharing her knowledge to help others understand their rights and navigate through the nightmares of elder abuse and isolation. Julie?
Good afternoon. Hello? Thank you so much, everybody, for being here. And what I want to say first of all is, I don't want to talk about myself. This isn't about me. This is about all of us. This is about humanity. This is about life or death. If you don't think this can happen to you, you're wrong. One week ago, I went to a screening, and it was for a victim. She since has passed away. She was a judge in California, and we did the screening of The Guardians, and there's actually a courthouse that's named after her, and she ended up in guardianship, and her nephew is currently fighting probate. He's in probate court. So it's time for everybody to wake up, none of us to finger-point to each other, for us all to work together. It's not about anything else. That's why I'm here. I welcome any questions. You can reach me at my email, juliet@casamcares.org. I'm dedicated to passing legislator visitation bills so that you can see your loved ones. That sounds crazy. So what I do is, I travel around now, and part of what I do, and pass bills with governors that say children can see their mother, father, sister, brother, aunt. That's what's going on here in the United States of America. This is human trafficking of the elderly. Thank you for coming, and that's all I have.
Last but not least, on our panel, we have Thomas Coleman of the Spectrum Institute. And of course, as we learn more about this entire movement, one of our panelists used the word greed. We know there's greed. There's politicians that are greedy. There are individuals that have their own personal agendas. But also involved in this movement, obviously, is the legal system. And so I'd like to say, Tom, you're one of the good guys. Tom is a lawyer, and you'll hear more about his background as a civil rights attorney. But throughout Tom's 45 years as a civil rights attorney, he's advocated for a variety of causes of minority populations, including cases and projects promoting justice and equal rights for people with intellectual and developmental disabilities. For the past six years, Tom has directed the Disability and Guardianship Project of Spectrum Institute. Starting with a focus on California, Tom's advocacy for guardianship reform has broadened to become a national cause. Mr. Coleman's advocacy efforts for guardianship reform have been acknowledged with awards from the Arc of California and from TASH. This is an international disability rights organization. Tom?
Thank you very much to Supervisor Miley for the invitation to participate and for convening this really historic forum. There's been nothing like this, to my knowledge, that's happened anywhere in California and perhaps anywhere in the nation. And finally, somebody listened and decided to exercise the jurisdiction that they had to at least bring some of the people together who are trying to cause reform and create a forum where those who are unaware, as well as those who are running the various agencies that are part of the system, can begin the process, which starts with acknowledging that something is wrong. I'm not a victim. I'm not a survivor. I have no family member involved in this. What I have is a colleague, Dr. Nora Balladarian, who's a clinical psychologist who's worked for decades with people with intellectual and developmental disabilities. And several years ago, she referred a case to me, saying, this is a conservatorship case. Something seems wrong. Can you look at it? You're a lawyer. Of course, you know people, neighbors, friends. You're a lawyer, and then they ask you something about an area of law that you know nothing about. So I looked into it, and then a few months later, there was another case. I looked into that. And a few months later, a third case. I looked into that. And I started, in each one of them, it was like, something is really, really wrong. I wondered whether these were isolated incidents, which is a possibility, or whether there was something systemically wrong with the conservatorship system. And so I started doing what some people here have done, and that is going into the court records and auditing case files. And I started seeing a pattern in practice of wrongdoing, negligence, civil rights violations, et cetera. So that led me down a path to where I am today. And that's like about, this has all been a volunteer, you know, for most people, it turns out to be a volunteer effort, whether you like it or not. And then, you know, you're into it so far that you can't get out, and you figure, well, I might as well go all the way. So I'm now like 8,000 hours into it. And what I've, but I've been learning, and the skills that I developed in other areas of the law for other populations, I'm able to apply to this. And my, again, my perspective primarily has been the people with developmental disabilities who are drawn into the system, the conservatorship system. And for most of them, it's not about money. Some of them it is, but for most of them, it's not about money. And yet, they're being stripped of their civil rights, and less restrictive alternatives are not being used, and it's overkill, overprotectiveness, and so on. And so I like to write things, and I'm going to, you know, end real quickly here, but I just want to say that I've got this packet of information that's available to everybody, and you can also find it online at spectruminstitute.org/path, P-A-T-H, as in a path for conservatorship reform. And it includes a letter to Supervisor Miley thanking him for this, and with links to some of the some of the things that Spectrum Institute has been doing that you can read about, that might give you some other ideas for things that you could do. Then there's the one-page piece called A Path for Conservatorship Reform: Moving Beyond Awareness, that talks about the problem, but I'm solution-oriented primarily. And that is, so it lists on the right-hand column, the various state and local public officials, and what they can do and what we should be asking them to do. The next is Conservatorship Reform in Alameda County: Questions and Answers on the Path Forward. So this identifies all of the local players of the conservatorship system, all of the agencies and officials that are involved, and asks some very pointed, specific questions of them, which hopefully, down the next weeks or so, we can get answers to, because we can't create solutions without knowing what's going on. And then finally, almost finally, what is the county jurisdiction in all of this? You know, I never really thought about it. You know, it's all just so amorphous. You have all these agencies and officials at the state and local level, and the three branches of government and all of that, but nobody's in control. But the county does have jurisdiction. And Supervisor Miley, with two other members of your board, you can help the local system become a model for the state and indeed the nation. You have the jurisdiction. And then finally, you know, when I saw that we had a city council member, you know, like, what could a city council do? And I thought, you know what? There is something they can do. So I came up with a library outreach volunteer effort, and I have that written up. And it's, part of the problem for isolation is getting people into contact with those who are being isolated. So through a volunteer program through the library, you can have volunteers that are connecting with the conservates. And any conservator that will not allow the volunteer to get access, that's an automatic red flag that should be reported to authorities. So that's what I have to offer is solutions, requests for facts, and then follow-through, because this is gonna take very specific follow-through, but with the leadership that's being displayed here by Supervisor Miley. And also, one last thing, the public defender was here this morning. He had to leave early. And I told him, with a smile on my face, "Your office is the key to reform of the conservatorship system in Alameda County. And with proper staffing and funding, your office can make every other agency do what they're supposed to do, and if they don't, you can file notices of appeal." So we have a lot more to talk about, Mr. Brendan Woods, and he looked receptive to it. So there is hope here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom, and thank you to all of our panelists. So we have some important designated time to hear your thoughts and comments, and we have a wonderful response here. And I do know that we're operating within some obvious time concerns, but we do want to hear from you, and we're gonna speak forth the words that you have shared with us here today. The first question posed from our audience, "Can you discuss what efforts are being made in Alameda County to reform the legal guardianship system and keep both public and private guardians accountable?" Do we have any individuals on the panel? I see Richard coming forward.
I'll make the comment that I've done public records requests and have gotten nothing in response, so I'm not sure what's happening. It'd be nice to get answers to my public records requests.
Okay, very good. Any other comments from the audience that could speak to this important question? Any things that are presently being done in Alameda County to reform? And by the way, I should say, this question came from a official within our Alameda County arena.
I was asked to make a--
Linda? Yes, please.
Yeah. Teri asked me to make a comment, and I'll actually make two. So you're getting two for the price of one. Teri pointed out the Professional Fiduciaries Bureau, which is supposed to, was created to oversee licensed professional fiduciaries. Those are the professional conservator guardians like April Parks that you saw in the film. Right. I'll echo that. Just Wednesday, Richard and I were at the quarterly meeting of the Professional Fiduciaries Bureau, and we really grilled them on, what is it that you investigate? How do you get a complaint against a license? And it's, they seem to be saying that if the act rises to the level of a crime, if they think they see a crime, they don't touch it because they're not authorized to investigate crimes. So if you just do something a little bit bad, they might investigate. If you do something really bad, they wash their hands of it and they walk away. I see some heads nodding out there. And then I pushed them on this, so like, so you're telling me if someone commits a crime, say kidnapping, false imprisonment, isolation, mental abuse, physical abuse, perjury, chemical restraint, you will just not even look at that because it's a crime? And at that point, their attorney shut down, shut down the discussion and would not allow that to be discussed any further. Draw your own conclusions. Coming back to Alameda County and what could possibly be done here, you have a local rule of court that specifies that for every conservatee who has assets, everyone who has green, again, the important color here is green. So for every conservatee that has green, they are automatically appointed a court-appointed attorney from Legal Assistance for Seniors. This is a problem. You need to look at it more.
Thank you, Linda. Any other comments? Teri?
Yeah, I just want to comment some more about the Professional Fiduciary Bureau. What was it? What meetings did we go to September?
November, December.
There was a meeting in November, and I attended. I was in Encino, California, and WIGO, and they had, you know, an agenda and everything, and they even had their budgetary analysis, you know, set for the next year. What was interesting is that they claim they don't have any duty to the American public to investigate crime or allegations of crimes with regard to these licensees, but yet, in the budgetary proposal, they had allocations for the Attorney General and investigators. And when I raised that issue, I was like, well, if you don't do anything and you don't forward anything to the AG, why is it budgeted for? Well, what was interesting was, the next meeting that was supposed to occur, they literally shut down the Encino office. So they didn't like the questions that I had asked or raised, and that's more the same for the last 15 years.
One more quick comment on the PFP. This is not Alameda County, but it's a state problem. In three years, and the records are on the website, they got 400 complaints, 408 complaints from the public for 735 licensees. Zero complaints that had any disciplinary action taken. You do not have 408 complaints with no smoke.
Thank you. Any other comments on the question? Richard, I think you just echoed something we heard from Supervisor Miley at the beginning, and that is, where there's smoke, there's probably fire.
Lot of fire.
And I think that, again, we fully respect and appreciate Supervisor for bringing this issue to bear. And the question was, what are we doing in Alameda County? We're learning, first of all, about really, what's really happening, not only in Nevada, but around the country. And so we're becoming more informed, and so we're doing something here because of the leadership of our supervisor, yes. To, first of all, inform ourselves, to arm ourselves, to receive the websites and information from individuals that are here that are representatives for this cause, so that we can be advocates, that we can speak up and ask questions, right? Inquire. Raise your hand. Say something. And so one of our goals today is that each of us in this room will walk away more fortified as a soldier in the Army to look out and protect our seniors from this kind of elder abuse. One of the comments that was offered says, "It's good to see that April Parks was sentenced to 16 years in jail just last week." Right?
Yes.
I don't know if I've ever given a hand for something like that, but I don't know about you. Right on. What took you so long? And Judge Norheim and others are reassigned, so we're gonna continue to expect, to make calls, and even here in Alameda County, we can speak for it, right?
Absolutely.
You all hear that?
That's true.
We can make comments to our representatives about what we know as it relates to this documentary, and speak up to those individuals that have been affected. You're meeting them here, live and in living color. We have some individuals in the audience also that have experienced this kind of injustice even here in Alameda County. So let's encourage them, speak up, and get out there, and let our voices be heard.
Just a comment on that--
Please, Rick. Thank you.
Everybody in this crowd has an opportunity to make a difference. The genesis of this movie, the genesis of the Parks sentencing, the genesis of the removal of three judges who were routinely embracing guardianship, they were running a guardianship factory. And you have judges in California that run conservatorship factories. Bring them in, sign them up, give them the money, on to the next one. Was two things. Victims and their family members, the survivors, kept speaking out to the county commissioners. The judge refused to listen to the complaints. The court management refused to listen to the complaints. The police refused to listen. The DA refused to listen. It wasn't until we got mass media, major media, the largest newspaper in the state of Nevada, and ABC Action News, Channel 13, Darcy Spears, who speaks there, when they got on to the story. And that's all about elevating your evidence to the media and getting to those elected officials. That's when change occurred. So each of us in the crowd have an obligation, to Cynthia's point, to speak out.
Thank you so much, Rick, for reinforcing that point. There's a question that says, "How do we, as citizens, affect the judicial system that perpetuates this?" I think that's a great question. Any thoughts, comments around that? I see Tom, and I see Teri. Teri, would you go first?
Every election, read up on the judges that are running. Know them. Know their history. Know their ethical standing. Know about complaints. If you have time, go sit in a court and see them in action. I mean, just really use your ability to scope out who you're putting in office, because it's very important. I'm just so happy that Mr. Bartlet is here, that, you know, Supervisor Miley is here, and that they actually looked at this film and like, they weren't going to take it and sit down and say nothing. I'm just glad to see all of you.
Yeah, I think it's very important that, that people, that we, you, go out and spread the message. Show this movie at your church. Show it at the senior center. Show it everywhere, because there's two problems here. You have, in this country, a deep antipathy towards senior citizens. Their issues don't poll well. Nobody cares. Second, you have just this sheer disbelief that we could have that level of corruption and, you know, and theft happening within our official bodies. They can't believe it. But I happened to, I spent time in Chicago as a kid, and when I was there, there was a thing called Operation Greylord, with like 132 judges were found to be corrupt and some went to prison. So, I mean, I accept it. But what you have to do is you have to make people understand this is real and overcome the barriers. When I did the op-ed calling for a senior bill of rights, they didn't want to publish it, because they said this doesn't affect broken residents. So this is an uphill battle. It's gonna require lots of sunlight, lots of naming people's names, lots of hardcore activism, because, you know, this is statism. This is like, what you saw there is what typifies authoritarian states, you know, like the Soviet Union, China, where they can just take your property, take your person, with no answer to them. But they have to answer to us.
Right on, brother. That's right. Got it.
I'd like to make a comment on that, too. You know, having worked with individual cases and systemic reform in the judicial system for 45 years, with this particular set of problems, we will get, we will not make the progress we want if we keep focusing solely on individual cases. Yes, you have to do that, too, but we're talking about systemic reform. So my suggestion is you go right to the top, and that is the Chief Justice of the California Supreme Court, Justice Tani Kantil Sakauwe. And Spectrum Institute has submitted five proposals to the Chief Justice as to what she can do as Chief Justice to address these problems statewide. And that's mentioned in the Path Forward document that is available to you. So, and there's a link on the document online, or if you go to that, spectruminstitute.org/path. Read the proposals and write to her and say, you know, "I've read the proposals. I support them, and I think that you should take action on them." And then send a copy of your letter to the presiding judge of the Alameda County Superior Court, so that the presiding judge sees that you care, but you're going right to the top. So that's where we have to go. She has the authority to take action. When there was a scandal exposed by the LA Times in 2005 and 2006, then Chief Justice Ron George convened a statewide task force. They made a lot of proposals. Some changes occurred, not enough, but go to the top.
Articulated very clearly, go to the top. The decision-makers, the people that have the authority and the power to make a difference at that level and every other level. Extremely important point. Thank you for making that point. How much time do we have? 10 minutes? All right, great. So we can-- So I love how passionate the person that wrote this question was. He said, "Why did it take so long, and does it take so long, to get action?"
I got that.
Do it.
Okay, so why it takes so long is nobody believes you. For two years, nobody believed me about anything. And no disrespect, but I went to politicians, went to attorneys, went to doctors, went to everybody, actually sat down and had meetings with the top, and nobody would listen. So it's determination, pure determination. For me, it was either I was willing to let the guardian take over my parents' life, or they were gonna die. It's life or death. It's a serious matter. This is why we're here. Pay attention. No matter what field you're in, it doesn't matter. It's never too late. None of us are perfect. You can do it all today. Just wake up. That's all. There's no formula here. We need to all work together.
And can I just add something to what Julie says? And Ben touched on this. Apparently, the senior population is just underserved to such a degree that I just can't even find the words. But I will share with you, one law enforcement agency I went to actually told me what I was trying to report just wasn't sexy enough. And I still have no words for that, because you guys are pretty sexy to me. So stay relevant, please. Don't let anybody force you into, I don't know where you go, "Well, I'll go where you're not respected anymore." But please, just stay boisterous and active and do everything you can, or they're coming for you. And I don't know another way to say that.
At the court level, it's stall, because it's a transfer of wealth. The attorneys get paid an hour every time they show up for a five-minute status hearing.
The attorneys get paid an hour every time they show up for a five-minute status hearing. So, in our case, we had 16 status hearings in 15 months, and nothing was accomplished. There was just, "How are you guys doing? Go out in the hall, work things out, come back in 30 days." At the state level, there's, each elected official is only allowed to introduce 25 bills a year, and there's people like me going up there by myself, dressed the way I am, or you have lobbyists in $15,000 suits that are in the same elevators, who is the elected official that they'll listen to?
I'd like to make a comment also, on, you know, why is it taking so long? And part of it is because officials don't believe it. I mean, most people don't believe it until they see a film like this, and even then they wonder. And I'd just make an example of a supervisor in a county in Southern California, was approached by a few of us about this a few years ago. And we presented credible evidence of systemic problems. And then, I found out recently, why the door was slammed, and we didn't have any more communication, because she went to her friends in the judicial community, who told her that everything was okay. Now, this is a progressive person, but if they turn to people in the establishment who are running the system, and believe what they say, then, you know, you're kind of lost, if you don't have that type of support. One of her staff people told her recently, "You only heard a part of the story from them." The other comment I would make is that it's taking so long, because there's no one in charge. There's no one official in charge of the conservatorship system in Alameda County. There's no one official or agency in charge of the conservatorship system in the state of California. So, it's really not a system, it's a loose collection of interrelated statutes that bring various agencies, and giving them a piece of the puzzle. And each one is doing their own little piece of the puzzle, but it's like, an impromptu orchestra that comes together without a conductor, and without accountability, and they're all doing their own thing, and there's nobody in charge. So, that's why, it's like, at the county level, how do we find somebody and say, "You're it, we're making you in charge." And that's again, where I say, it's, in this county, it should be the public defender's office taking the lead on this, with the backing of the Board of Supervisors, and through them, you can get to the rest of it, rest of the system. So, it's finding somebody who will assume responsibility, who has jurisdiction to be in charge. But when nobody's in charge, and everybody's pointing the finger everywhere else, you get nowhere.
Why does it take so long? You go back to the LA Times story. In 2003, '04, advocates were going to the LA Times, they came out with their series in 2005. It led to the Reform Act of 2006 in the state of California. Guess what? It's still not funded.
I think we're close to the, it looks like Linda had a comment she wanted to make, and Rick, you may also have one before we close, okay?
Yeah, I wanted to add a comment, that it's not a lack of laws on the books, it's not a lack of appropriate laws. California's probate codes are actually pretty good. And California's penal codes on elder abuse are actually pretty good. The problem is complete lack of enforcement. And not to defend judges, believe me, I do not like to defend judges. Have some, and that's a story for another day. But, I was just looking at a docket, there's a hearing I'm going to on Wednesday over in Contra Costa, it's a conservatorship matter. This woman's life is basically in the balance. And for 30 minutes, there are 15 matters on calendar. There is no way that woman can get due process in two minutes.
Teri, please.
Before we take any more time, I just need to recognize a lady named Venus Gist in the back. She, she's pushed, and pushed, and pushed, and pushed, to make this happen, and Supervisor Miley's office, you know, accommodated her, and I thank you so much, sweetheart.
Well, this has been an incredibly enriching, learning opportunity, where we all see that we all play an important role, and the social justice movement around elder abuse, as it relates to seniors, the disabled, and those that have no voice. Before I pass the mic over to Supervisor Nate Miley, I think it's fortuitous for us that, in a few days, we'll be honoring Dr. Martin Luther King, and the social justice, civil rights movement of this country. I'd like to quote something that Dr. King said. He said, "I believe that unarmed truth and unconditional love will have the final word in reality. This is why right, temporarily defeated as it seems, is stronger than evil triumphant." Can we give our panelists a round of applause, for standing up for right? Standing up against evil? And I'd ask Supervisor Nate Miley, let's give him another round of applause, as he stands up for right. God bless you, Supervisor Miley.
Thank you. Before I make some concluding remarks, I'm going to have Venus come on up, she has some words. And I too, I was going to acknowledge Venus, but I'll acknowledge her now. Yes, she was really the driving force behind this. Between her and Tom, I probably got three dozen emails, and that's why I had to pull in five of my staff, I have about 13 staff. I said, "After the holidays, I need some help pulling this together, I can't just put the responsibility on Pria, otherwise, we're not going to be successful." So, I want to give Venus an opportunity to make some comments, then I'll conclude.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. Wow, this is, I don't know, today I'm really just a little nervous and sensitive, because this is very personal and dear to me. I just thank all you guys for being here. You're my hero. He's so humble, and he just, you know, he just doesn't know how much he's appreciated. And thank you all for coming, but, my name is Venus Gist, I'm a victim, and I'm an advocate. Born in Berkeley, raised in Hayward, Alameda County is my home. Public servants, many of us are called to be public servants. And we commit to that, that work, you know, that commitment. It means to serve with integrity and with honor. You know, our money says, "In God we trust," not "We trust in money." Many of us took oath for the work that we do. Serve we the people, not the money, not the greed, not the corruption. Why? Why are we warring against the people? Sure, there are families, they have conflict, they disagree, but when they come to the court, and they come to the justice system, vulnerability should not warrant a predatory action towards people. Conservator? Conservator? To conserve, not waste, but to preserve. I have a question, because my family personally experienced it. I was just speaking to two of the public defenders, and they thought it wasn't happening in Alameda County. I hope their viewpoint has changed. It's happening in Alameda County. It happened to my family. There was conflict, but Judge Thomas Riordan, I'm calling names, legal assistant for seniors, Kirsten Voiles, and my mother's conservator, Michelle Tierney, did not honor with integrity to take care of my mother. They tried to kill her. The truth is, like all these people here said, it's all about the assets, it's all about the money. I just want to read this, we just received this, if you don't believe it. "To the beneficiaries of the Carter Family Trust," that's my family, my father's sitting right here, Cradel Carter, "As amended on November 24, 2015, the trustee hereby gives notice to all primary beneficiaries of the above referenced trust, that she intends to and will take the following proposed action. On or after March 1, 2019, the trustee will take the following action. Sell the trust property, commonly known," gives the address, "the trustee believes the proposed action is consistent with the terms of the Carter Family Trust as amended, as well as in the best interest of the trust beneficiaries. The notice is being given pursuant to Probate Code Section 16502. You will be treated as if you consented to the proposed action, and you may not object after the proposed action is taken unless a beneficiary serves the trustee with a timely written objection pursuant to Probate Court Section 1215 by January 15, 2019, or a beneficiary timely files a petition with the court pursuant to Probate Court Section 17200 to instruct the trustee otherwise. The name and address of trustee is as follows, because Judge Thomas Riordan appointed, fired my dad as trustee of his own trust, and appointed the temporary conservator, she's a fiduciary, Michelle Tierney, 1L Management Services, is in San Leandro, she's over our state, if you don't believe it. They've racked up fees. My father's property is probably worth like $700,000. They're saying we owe about $15,000, you're going to sell the property? I just want you guys to know, I want to give you a real, live, happening situation right now. There's other people in this audience, and I just have to say this, while I have the moment, I may never get this opportunity again. Alameda County, give you some quick overview. Kathy Walton, mother denied her rights to live with her daughter. Laura Holmes, father and mother were drugged, abused, she was stripped of her visitation. She's part of our advocacy group. Linda Kincaid, you heard Linda's story, her mother, her mother was raped in the system, this woman right here. Abused, raped, stolen out of her home. Mr. and Mrs. Urschery, they had family wealth, their parents left them businesses to run, stripped of their family estates. Mary Vivian, she's not here because she had to leave and flee to Mexico, because they kicked her out of her home, they arrested her. You know her. Diane Taylor, scammed out of her home. We know Julie here, we know what happened to her parents. Ben Bartlett, his mother's right there, she'll tell you herself her story of losing, getting kicked out of her home. And then my father, Cradel Carter, who's right here, what he's going through now. Just because we had some family conflict, now they want to strip an elderly man, 82 years old, take his property. Talk with us, sit down, concur, let's reason. They don't talk to you, they don't respect you, they don't consider you, they don't value you, they don't honor you for working hard. You know, you're having some family conflict, but, yeah, you worked hard for this, let's sit down. We don't want you to lose your property, but we do want our money, but let's talk about it. I just wanted to share that with you. It was on my heart, this is a very serious matter, as they all have told you. And we need your help and support to make a difference. If you want to continue with screenings, Tyrell here has a sign-in sheet, we'd love to do more screenings in the San Francisco Bay area. And you can see Tyrell right there, he's sitting in front, raises his hand, he'll get your name, number, we'll come to your community, your churches, your organizations, your businesses, and we'll do more screenings, and share this with the population, they need to know. Thank you. Thank you, Supervisor Miley.
So, let me just make some concluding comments here. First of all, I want to thank the panelists. I've met a couple of the panelists, and I know Ben, he's a local elected official, but I want to thank the panelists. And I saw the screening a few months ago, and that's what prompted me to continue this. And I think, as was pointed out by the moderator, we're on a journey of learning, doing our due diligence, because quite frankly, when this was, well, first of all, many of you know, I've been working with older adults since 1986, so older adults are my passion, seniors, and I'm actually the president of the United Seniors of Oakland and Alameda County, and some of our leaders of our organization and staff are in the room now. So, you know, seniors is a passion of mine, but even though it's a passion of mine, and when this was brought to my attention, this particular matter of probate, and conservatorship, and the abuses associated with it, you know, some of my staff kind of, you know, papooed it, because things go to my staff before it comes to me. And I said, "Well, let me, let me take a look at it." And I met with some of the folks who had the concerns, and I said, "Well, maybe there, you know, it looks like there's some smoke here, and there might be some fires, let me do a little bit more digging." And that's what prompted many more meetings and discussions, and got us to this place today. Because, yeah, people don't quite believe that this can seriously be happening in our country, and not in Alameda County. And so, we have to continue to understand, and I appreciate what Tom put together, I need to make sure I get that document, because I do, I'm result-oriented, I do need to understand the issue, but then I need to understand, now how can we address that issue? And I'm not somebody who rushes into things, I'm not afraid to take on controversy, but I don't rush into things, and then when we do do something, we're in it. We're in it. We're not going to back off, and we're not in it for the sprint, we're in it for the marathon. It's, you know, so it's not a sprint. And that's pretty much how we roll and how we operate. And, you know, being someone who's graduated from law school, University of Maryland School of Law, and being someone who's tackled many tough issues, when I was on the Oakland City Council, and as a county supervisor, Kamika Dunlap, my chief of staff over there, you know, we took on the pharmaceutical industry, and this county passed an ordinance in 2012, requiring the pharmaceutical industry to be responsible for dealing with unwanted and expired medications. And it went all the way to the US Supreme Court, and we won, pharmaceutical industry said they would, you know, they would bankrupt the county. I just use that as an example, because I've taken on a few industries in my time, you know, the alcohol industry, pharmaceutical industry, the gun lobby, et cetera, et cetera. And so, when we take on a fight, and we get into it, we get into it. So, if you've got some solutions, I definitely want to look at that. And if the public defender can play a role in this, I definitely want to talk to the public defender, because he works with the Board of Supervisors. He's not elected, he works for us. The district attorney, now she's elected, but she's a good friend, and I think she wants to do the right thing. So, Nancy O'Malley. So, we're going to keep, we're going to keep on this. And I do have friends in the judiciary, but that doesn't mean I can't challenge the system, because if there are abuses, and I do think there must be abuses based on everything I've heard, it can't, I mean, all of you can't be making this stuff up. You really can't be, and Venus can't be making this stuff up. And so, I want to balance things, and I will look at it objectively, through a critical eye, but I do think there are things that need to be done to address the problems, both locally, and in the state, and in the country. And if we start this journey, maybe we'll, Ben and I could get some other people from the state, and other people from the federal government, folks that we know, to support us, and try to bring about some serious reforms. So, with all that being said, I thank all of you for attending today, I thank the panelists. We were livestreaming the panel discussion, right Paul? It's on my Facebook page, so it's livestreamed, it's been recorded, and you can pick it up again. And as Venus said, there'll be other screenings of this, I think Ben's going to have a screening on Sunday, right? You want to announce that? Oh, yeah. So, on Sunday, what time are we doing it?
2:30 PM. Doris.
Okay, so, Sunday at 2:30, we're going to show this movie again, in South Berkeley, at the South Berkeley Senior Center on Ashby. 2:30 PM, Sunday. So, spread the word.
Yeah, tell people, tell everybody.
Yeah, just to build, see the young man with the long hair, see this man.
Also, if you want your own copy of the movie, it is available on Amazon, in DVD and Blu-ray, and on iTunes, and pre-orders are open now.
All right. So, once again, I want to thank everybody for coming out. My office is going to continue to be engaged in this, Pria will be taking the lead on it, so get everything to Pria. We'll continue to work with everybody, and thank you for informing me, and I just want to say, and I've said this before, in many other contexts, even with the pharmaceutical industry... pharmaceutical industry, when people brought that issue to my concern about medications and this proper disposal of medications, I said to them, "Why don't you just put it out and let the waste management pick it up?" And people said, "Are you crazy? People want those drugs." I said, "They do? Oh, okay. So you're, you're educating and enlightening me on this issue." You know, there are abuses in our system, the courts, the judiciary, this, that, and the other, et cetera. Because I hear from our staff, and once again, it's just not my staff, county staff, and they tell me things, and I've got to balance what they're telling me, because those folks, either we hire their bosses, and they hire their staff and down the line, and I hear things, and they say, "Well, you know, it's not quite what it is." It, it isn't? No, it isn't. But then I hear from all of you that there are problems. So obviously, we've got to continue to dig on this, and you've got my support. We'll be working on it, so thank you all. Thank you.
Great job.
Very effective.
Thank you.